Through some staff changes. Item eight, three, needs to be moved from consent calendar to reports to follow through how things have been done in the past. And we need to move to table item eleven point one due to staff questions.
Motion?
That is a motion.
Got a first by Kevin with an amendment.
Second.
Aaron, any discussion? All those in favor of the agenda, please indicate by stating yes.
Yes.
Opposed to no. That motion carries. Please stand, remove cover, and join us for Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Item four is informational reports included in the packeted online is the April 5th Planning Commission meeting minutes. That's all that's included with this packet. Item five is announcements and praise. I'd like to take a moment and pray if you'd like to join me. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the ability to come before you. We thank you for this great country and this great community, celebrating Easter and reminded of the resurrection and the defeating of death. You intercede for us in the right hand of God. We appreciate all you do for your, for this community and for each individual here. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. I got a couple of notes. Spring cleanup's coming. Usually means a blizzard happens when that gets scheduled, so first week in May, May 2nd through the 6th, that is when we have your regular pickup, you put it out front and we'll take it out of there at no charge. Something that only the city of Sturgis does that we're aware of, other communities open up their landfill, so definitely go the extra mile there. Prior to the spring wide city cleanup, we have the citywide yard sale. That is the Saturday before, which is the 30th of April. The Chamber puts that together, so appreciate their work there. We have any other announcements from council? Item six is counselor's update, so turn it over to you, Becca.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the opportunity to present tonight's counselor's update. The first topic I want to mention is the city election. I want to say a big thank you to our voters who came out last Tuesday to vote. We had the largest voter turnout in years, and it was really great to see the city's voters ready to express their opinion and how energized they were to exercise their right to vote. In my opinion, Sturgis voters sent the overwhelming message that they want to see the city's upward trajectory continue, that they support the positive growth which has been happening for the last decade, and that politics of personal destruction has no place in our community. Moving forward to our future, I personally will work to ensure the common sense concerns voiced these past weeks will not be ignored, and that we will continue to work towards the positive growth and measured development that our town deserves. See, it takes not only the nine of us sitting here, but also the hardworking city staff and the residents of our community to all work together to make Sturgis the great town it is. And we are a great town. These last two years have proven that fact, and there's so many examples that I could cite. The Good Works Program, helping out our neighbors who may be sick, or like last October, when everyone pitched in and assisted those who needed to get their tree branches off of their roofs and out of their yards after the snowstorm. There's countless times we all can think of when we've helped others, or maybe when we've been the ones to get that same help. That is who we are. However, it seems to me that there is a contingent of citizens, especially on social media, who appear that their favorite pastime, their only hobby, is criticizing, whether it's our town, city leaders, businesses, et cetera. Look, as an elected official, I understand and accept that criticism is to be accepted. It comes with the job, and I always believe that there is room for improvement. So as a council member, I've been willing to work and will continue to be willing to work towards that needed improvement. So for those that find themselves with only relentless criticisms, I want to personally invite you to join me in constructive, positive communication regarding your questions. Come out from behind your keyboards and let's have a face-to-face discussion. This is a sincere invitation, an invitation to offer up sensible solutions for you to roll up your sleeves and join in positive dialogue and the hard work it sometimes takes to find common ground. My email is bzerpsd@sturgisgov.com, so please send me a message. I'll be waiting. The second item I want to talk about is two men who've been ones to roll up their sleeves and have dedicated a good portion of their lives these past years to improving our town. I'm talking about council members Jason Anderson and Dave Martenson. The hard work, time, and energy that you both have contributed to serving on the Sturgis City Council I know took sacrifice, and it so often took away from both your family time and work time. You both have been wonderful examples of servant leadership and positive public stewardship, and I want to thank you both as we get close to the end of your time here on council. I know we'll have more to say about that this next meeting, but I just wanted to be one of the first ones to say thank you for your years of service, for your guidance, for your words of wisdom, and for your leadership. I know our town and those of us sitting up here, we will forever be grateful. Thank you.
Thanks, Becca, and certainly echo the thank you to Dave and Jason. Item seven is city manager's report, and Mr. Ainsley will turn it over to you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. The first item is our sales tax report, and this is for sales through the month of February. And so it is for the first two months of the calendar year. Sales February this year were 22.6% higher than sales of last February. Sales throughout the first two months of the year were up 15.1%, so it is fantastic. However, just to caution everyone, the first two months are two of the smallest months, and so that's not necessarily a trend that we can rely on, but still we are off to a very, very good footing. And then looking at the tourism tax or the triple B tax, for that, the sales in February of this year were 23.8% higher than February of '21, and sales for the first two months of the year were up 8.2%. So again, we are doing quite well. The next item is our KPI report. For anyone that would like to see this, it's about an 18-page report that includes numerous different metrics for most of our community, communities' departments, and it's included in the agenda packet. If anyone has any questions on any of the numbers or metrics, please feel free to let me know. Be happy to review them with you, but it's everything from the community center to the liquor store to ambulance to finance to just about every department, including how many trips our Public Works Department takes to Belfour, where we get to pay the wonderful community of Belfour for our, for our waste. And then lastly, what we have is some payroll changes. We have hired our new Assistant Chief of Police, who is actually starting, chief is that next week, May 2nd, when he will be starting, and then we have some new employees in our ambulance service. We have a very part-time theater technician who is going to be working in our community center, and then Rick successfully was able to recruit a new wastewater treatment operator who was new to the community, and Rick, I think, got him caught up before he even got his address changed, and so he's working for the city of Sturgis before he unpacks to live in our community. So, good job, Rick. Any questions?
Daniel, I think it makes sense to state where the, the sales tax money goes, where your example showed on $100, the 450 goes to the state if you just want to mention that real quick.
Absolutely. So, for example, if you spend $100 at Lin's, it's, you would end up paying $6.50 in sales tax. $4.50 is sent to the state to pay for state expenses. $2 comes to the city. Of the $2, $1 is deposited into our general fund, and that pays for public safety, it pays for roads and parks, streets, different uses like that. $10 is provided to our equipment replacement fund that pays for the eventual replacement of our plows and bucket trucks and different things like that, and then $0.90 is placed in our capital improvement fund, and that's what pays for the majority of our road reconstruction projects or park enhancement projects, different things like that. Then the tourism tax is whenever you purchase alcohol, stay at a hotel, or eat at a restaurant, there's an extra 1% sales tax. And so instead of 6.5%, it becomes 7.5%. So again, $4.50 goes to the state, $2 goes to the city, and then one extra dollar goes to that, comes to the city. That one extra dollar gets deposited into the triple B fund that largely is used to fund SEDC, the Chamber of Commerce, and then also various tourism initiatives as well as quality of life enhancements such as Music on Main. Any questions?
Thanks, Daniel.
Thank you.
Item eight is consent calendar. I guess as a point for, just for note, is the 8.1 is actually to approve the consent calendar, which is part of the new system that we have here. 8.3 was moved to reports, which means does council wish to remove 8.2, 8.4, or 8.5 for any further discussion? Anybody in the public wish to remove 8.2, 8.4, or 8.5?
I move to approve 8.2, 8.4, and 8.5.
Got a first by Dave.
Second.
Got a second by Becca. We have minutes here, so we'll go ahead and roll call. Jason, we'll start with you.
Yes.
Aaron.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Becca.
Yes.
Um, yes. Kevin.
Yes.
Angela.
Yes.
Dave.
Yes.
And Mike.
Yes.
Consent calendar is approved. Item nine is claims, questions from council on claims included in the packet. About public questions on claims.
I had one question I'd asked Faye this before, maybe Daniel has an answer, but on page 13, there's Great Western Tire Company, and actually after the, the cost figure, the $1,092.78, there's a minus, and there's another minus after the next one, another minus after the next one. Does that mean that was mistakenly double paid and then that was paid back, or does anybody know?
David, what I'm wondering is, is if the fire department didn't go pay them, and then we turned around and went and paid them, and so then now we've got the, now we've got the credit. So that's kind of what I'm thinking, is that the fire department paid them, and then we turned around and paid them. They gave us C. M. voice and we paid them, so.
All right, that's what I figured by that I would ask.
I'd check. If it's different than that, I'll let you know.
All three are negative, so they're all three credits, and the first one equals to the other two, it looks like, just by quick math.
And I think.
Not quite, it doesn't.
Yeah.
But it's all credits.
We'll check on that just to make sure, but I think, like Faye said, what, what happens occasionally is that the volunteer fire department pays for something, and then we still end up getting the invoice, we send in the payments, so.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Got a first by Becca.
Second.
Second by Aaron. Any last discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by stating yes.
Yes.
Opposed to no. Please note unanimous Faye for roll call. Item 10 is public hearings. Subset A is a transfer of, of the name of the wine license to, from Uncle Louis, from David to Uncle Louis, so.
And yes, Mayor, I do want to let you know, it is not an LLC, it is actually an INC. I'm sorry, they had started out, I thought LLC, but it, it is actually INC., and that is what it is on their application, and it is on what the, the notice that went to the paper is, it is INC. So they just changed their form, they were just, you know, proprietary, you know, proprietary first, now they're going to be Inc., so incorporated.
But you said it was posted that way on the public hearing, so.
It was. On the public hearing, it was posted as a incorporated.
Any other discussion on this transfer from the council? Public input, questions, comments, concerns? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Got a first, first by Dean and a second by Mike. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by stating yes.
Yes.
Opposed to no. That motion carries. 10.2 is a similar item, that's a transfer of the malt beverage, and that also is a correction I bet for Inc., Faye.
It is correct.
But all the other paperwork is correct?
Yes.
Any questions from council? Public comments, questions, concerns? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Got a first by Mike.
Second.
Second by Angela. Any last discussion, public or council? All those in favor, please indicate by stating yes.
Yes.
Opposed to no. That motion carries. 11 is reports. 11.1 was amended in the agenda with an amended agenda to table, so brings us to 11.2, which is second reading of contractor licensing. Mr. Miller's got our staff report and works diligently on our ordinances, for sure.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As stated, this is the second reading for ordinance 2022-7 for the Title II revisions to the contractor ordinance. There are no significant or really any revisions between the first reading and this current version, and the primary revisions, substantive revisions, are the increase in minimum valuation for building permits shifts from $501 to $701. There's a significant increase in the number of exemptions to building permits. There's rewording of the stop work order to ensure that it's applicable to all portions of Title II, and there's also a landscaping contractors section that's been added to Title II, and there's an outdoor light fixtures section that's been added that addresses large outdoor lights. And then there's an expansion of the moving permit for mobile or manufactured homes, and the purpose of that is to ensure that any mobile or manufactured homes moving into the city and throughout the city are safe and habitable. And within this Title II revisions, it's a fairly comprehensive revision that updates some, a lot of the obsolete language, updates a lot of language, and it's been revisions that have been progressively discussed and added over the years to this final version. I'm happy to answer. Any questions?
Any questions from council for Eric? I think through the process with the discussion and first reading, we've certainly addressed what was the hot topics we felt, so hence the no substantive changes for the second How about public input on Title II?
Move to approve.
Got a first by Jason.
Second.
Second by Becca. Any last discussion? This is an ordinance, so we'll go ahead and roll call. Mike, we'll start with you.
Yes.
Dave.
Yes.
Angela.
Yes.
Kevin.
Yes.
I'm yes. Becca.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Aaron.
Yes.
And Jason.
Yes.
Second reading is approved. Thanks, Mr. Miller. Once it's posted, it's 20 days until it actually goes into effect. Item 11, three, is voluntary annexation. This is with the Pivot Development Group, and Mr. Ainsley's got the staff report here.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Just to point out to begin with, that this is a voluntary petition for annexation. This is to effectuate the eventual development of some property that's immediately west of the existing corporate limits of the city of Sturgis. It would be a part of a TIF development that would eventually construct about 75 single-family homes along with some additional multifamily homes. This has been discussed by the Planning and Zoning Commission as well as the city council on multiple occasions. We are going through the, the TIF documents at this point. We anticipate later this month that there will be a Planning and Zoning Commission meeting where they will be reviewing the, the creation of the TIF district and the boundaries in the TIF plan, and then we'll be making a recommendation to the city council, and we anticipate that the city council would be acting upon that next month. So this is the first step of that. The petition is part of a development agreement, is for this approximately 10 or almost 11 acres of property that's immediately west of Avalanche Road. This would be developed in conjunction with the property immediately east as well, so it, it may seem like it's a little disjointed, it's not, it's just that the property to the east is already in the city limits, and so this is making sure that all the property is in the city limits. All of the development here would be served by city utilities, including water, wastewater as well as sanitation. The Infrastructure Advisory Committee has been reviewing the proposed master plan of the area in significant detail, and just to make sure everyone knows that as a part of this, if the TIF district ultimately is not approved by the council in the coming months, then at that point, the owners would be requesting that they would be de-annexed so that this portion would not be in the city limits. And again, the reason for that is the, the desire of the, of the owners is to actually develop the property, so if the TIF district's not approved, then they wouldn't be able to develop it, so at that point, there's not a, a reason for it to be a part of the city. And so that is one caveat with this. With that being said, are there any questions?
The unplanted property that's included there, that'll be developed as it moves forward in the plan.
Correct.
Like you stated, this is the first step so you can go back to planning and zoning.
Correct.
Yep.
And this has been reviewed by the county assessor's office? Is that right? Yeah, the assessor's office.
Any further discussion from council? Come on up, Bonnie. Welcome home.
I just wasn't very clear, okay, because I can't see that far, but Avalanche Road runs by the end there where it says, I think, L10, is that correct?
Yep.
So this is all west of Avalanche Road?
Correct.
Yes.
Will they still develop the east side even if we don't approve the TIF for the west side?
It, the TIF would be covering both portions, the west side as well as the east side.
So they won't do any of it if there's no TIF?
Yeah, because the TIF helps to pay for the infrastructure improvements to actually do the development.
Right, okay. It's just that you'd said that the east side was already in the city limits, but that's not the issue, TIF is the issue.
Yes.
So we won't, if you don't do the TIF, then there won't be any of it.
Correct.
Out there. And this is the area, is this the area we were talking about, parking on one side of the street and stuff like that? Is that, I was listening last meeting, but I couldn't hear very well. Has that been resolved, or are we still working on those issues?
Still part of a bigger master plan yet, that's still in development.
Okay.
This first step here, this voluntary annexation, is just to get the entire property that's going to be developed, all within the city limits, is what's going on, just with this first step.
If they don't get the TIF, we'll un-annex them.
Correct.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion?
Just a comment.
Go ahead.
You know, I just want to thank the developers on this particular development. You know, we've been working on this one with the Infrastructure Action Committee for the last couple of months, and there's some unknowns in terms of getting access through Avalanche Road and working with the state and figure out what that route's going to be, and so I really appreciate the developers being pretty flexible. We had a good discussion on this about two months ago. I think, Mike, you were bringing up some stuff about lot sizes, the width of the streets, and those things were considered, they went through and made some adjustments. You know, we're still working that, but again, I really appreciate the flexibility that the developers have demonstrated throughout this whole process.
Thanks, Aaron. Do the developers want to make any comments at all at this point, or feel comfortable where we're at? Again, thank you for sure, it's, housing is a big need in our community. Any further discussion, council or public? Is there a motion?
Move to approve, as is.
Got a first by Jason.
Second.
Second by Dave. Any last discussion?
I want to clarify.
You bet.
Now that we're sending the meeting out to people here, Danny, could you give us a quick explanation of what a TIF is, because I think there are a lot of people who don't know that. And then like you've done before, but just kind of a quick understanding of that.
The question is from Bonnie on defining a TIF, I guess, as part of the discussion and development of this project, so go ahead, Daniel.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. A, a TIF is where a, a few parcels within a community are defined for potential development, and so usually it's a largely vacant property, and so it'll be four, or five, six different parcels. They're merged into one TIF district. Then at that point, there's a base valuation, so essentially what the value, the assessed value of all those parcels currently are, and then what it allows is the developer to take out a loan, to be able to receive some money to, and put into play some of the infrastructure necessary so that that property can be developed to a higher use. And then once it's developed to a higher use, then the assessed valuation increases, and then the additional property taxes that are paid on that additional assessed valuation, that's called a property tax increment. Those additional property taxes are then all paid to the city, and the city in turn transfers that to the bank or whoever lends the funds, so that, that loan can be repaid. And it's a way to allow properties to actually get developed, because usually the infrastructure costs outweighs the, the resale value of the lots, and so without some additional assistance, there's no way to really get properties to be developed. And so this allows properties to be developed, and then ultimately, once the loan is paid off, then all of that incremental tax revenue ends up going to the, the city and the county and the school district. And school districts, due to some reforms and TIF legislation at the state level, essentially are made whole in this through the state and other entities that actually end up providing the school with those same funds, and so really, it's the city and county that's foregoing the increased tax revenue for a small amount of time to make sure that the value of the properties increases so that there's future higher revenue.
Thanks, Daniel. We got a first and a second on the floor. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by stating yes.
Yes.
Opposed to no. That motion carries. Item 11.4 is candidates the votes for the April 12th election. Well, let's just do that last since we moved it, yeah. Just makes sense to put it down there. So Faye has the staff report here, so I'll turn it over to you.
So of course, you know, we all had the election. What I have for you is the poll books and then the tally sheet, and so I would have you, they have been sealed the night of the election, they were sealed by the counting board. You would be able to unseal these, go ahead and look at them, make sure. Make sure now, as far as numbers goes, there was a few items that didn't get counted and that a ballot, a couple ballots, because they were the wrong ward. Other than that, you might see a little bit of a change in the numbers, but they're really close. So, or someone voted for two people instead of one, stuff like that. So those ballots then get thrown out, so.
What you did on Tuesday night when you did the numbers.
Right. And they were putting in the election box, poll box, you know, the box itself, so. So I will go ahead and this is Ward 1.
I'm near the time. I'm gonna come stand behind.
And, okay. Do you want to go ahead and know that?
Becca can do that one.
I'll go over in behind Becca.
Ward 3 is a...
Ward 4.
Dean?
Jason.
Can Dean look at him? I thought I couldn't touch.
Right? You get no real good taste of sitting like this. Rip him over. Run a pocket knife?
Jason's got one.
I can find all my stuff. No, I do, but I don't want to bother you.
And then, once we get through this, we will have you guys make a motion to approve it. And then this will be, there is a piece of paper I need everyone to sign verifying that they have been canvassed and they are official.
This is just pretty much looking over the...
Maybe ask for clarification from...
I thought we used to see the polls. It's okay. They probably want to stay independent.
Do you want to actually come?
If you have any questions, please, please ask.
This is...
So one of these is fifty, so fifty...
I'm like...
How come they're... Oh, okay. One thirty-six.
How do you know that?
So, hold on. So one thirty-six.
Strange. It does seem strange.
That adds up, right? I don't understand why this one doesn't add up. Okay.
Yeah.
One thirty. We've got one thirty-seven.
Got them, Dave?
Mm-hmm. Very much good.
I mean, it's still more.
Yeah.
Um, okay. Forty, one forty-four.
Don't know.
Why was this one different?
It must have been a recall.
Oh, okay, because this one is right where this one is.
I bet that was, I bet it was.
This, this, this didn't add up.
Ah.
Yeah, that's not...
I suppose there was a recount, I see.
So that's what that is, it's a recount if you see it again.
We should have been told that.
Okay. So let's see her.
It's good.
And I think I've talked to most of you about this, but the counting board was excellent. This is the way we need to go no matter what from here on in is we need the counting board. So just to let you know.
Oh, Casper.
Yes, Terry's one. Yep. I knew most of them, yep. These have to be kept for... I don't know. Fay, how long do the poll books have to be retained?
Four years.
Three years.
For a year.
I thought they'd be longer, yep.
Unless there's a lawsuit.
Yep. I didn't know if it would be beneficial, but I would offer the... The viewers, the children to come forward and look at these poll books if they'd be interested.
Now that you have opened them, they are public record, so anybody can come look at them because they are public record, once you guys have opened them and looked at them.
If you're interested in the process, now is an opportunity that you won't get for a long time.
Speaking of our young, I had an eighteen-year-old come in and sit on the election workers. She called me and she was awesome. I won't be able to get her back because she's going to college this fall, but she was very good. She, she was pretty impressive.
Going once? Twice? Thank you for coming, though. It's quite an experience. I never got to see any of this till I was elected to an office. It's something that should be done at the high school civics level. They still have civics.
That's true. That's true.
You guys kind of go over there?
We're fine, yeah.
And with the motion, I will put all the numbers in. The motion will include all the numbers and, you know, that. So if anybody goes back two years from now or three years, it will be right in the minutes, so.
Is there a motion after the canvas?
Motion.
First by Dean to approve. We have a second by Becca. We have a first and a second on the floor. Any further discussion, council or public? We'll go ahead and roll call. Jason, we'll start with you.
Yes.
Aaron? Dean?
Yes.
Becca?
Yes.
I abstain. Kevin?
Abstain.
Angela?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
And Mike?
I abstain.
Motion carries. Item 11.5 is in addition after the amended agenda item. This is to approve an eight-foot versus a six-foot fence at 3025 trailhead loop. I'll go ahead and pinch-hit for this since Dave isn't here and we didn't plan on this exactly. So basically, it's on one side of the house is all they're asking for at this point in time for the variance from the ordinance allowed six-foot fence to the eight-foot fence between their house and the neighbors. It has gone to planning and zoning. It also, the neighbors have no concerns with it. It's due to an elevation change in hopes of privacy, so. Does anybody have any questions from council on the request for variance for just one side of the house at this point between the two structures? How about public input? On this request for variance? Is there a motion? We've got a first by Becca.
Second.
We've got a second by Kevin. All those in favor, please indicate by stating yes.
Yes, yes.
Opposed, a no. That motion carries. Brings us to item 12, which is other matters that come before the council. An opportunity for council and the public to speak on non-agenda items, no action is what that means. I'll start with council tonight. Does council have anything to add?
Mayor, I'd like to add to Becca's comment that I appreciate what she said about openness, that all the candidates, all the councilors on the diocese here are open to the same level of interaction that Becca brought forward, that we represent all the voters in our community here, not just the ones that voted one way or another, and that it's the decisions of council that are carried forward. And if there's issues or concerns, please, please address the council because ultimately we are making the decisions.
Thanks, Kevin. Anything else from council? Aaron's reaching for a microphone.
Just one comment on the adventure park. Last week, I sat down with some of the city staff and we visited with three different locations, California, Wisconsin, and it was both in Wisconsin, looking at different man-made lakes. We got a few more phone calls to make. We're going to make one more phone call to get one that actually has a liner, like the one that we're proposing for the proposed adventure park here in Sturgis. And we want to talk to a biologist. Key thing, though, coming out of those three discussions, whippets are very popular. Some of these man-made lakes have been around for several years and just operated as just a basically a lake. Here, within the last three, four years ago, they introduced the whippets. I don't, I should have brought a picture, but whippets, that's all the rubber stuff that's sitting, you know, you bounce on and play on, it's out in the water. Since they've introduced those whippets, their attendance has just skyrocketed. It had a lot of increase from people that live in the particular, in that location. It also drives tourism too, from people from outside their communities coming over specifically, you know, driving by other lakes to go to these particular man-made lakes to see these, the whippets. One of the things that, one of them has a design that's very similar to our design to be able to mitigate stormwater and also to mitigate and try to reduce the amount of water file that would be operating in and around the water. That design seems to work. They've had that one for quite some time now, I think about five years, and haven't not had any problems when it comes down to water quality. So I think in, from a water quality perspective, design really matters and the CRS report recommendation for us had that same kind of a design. But again, we've still got a few more phone calls to make. We'll probably need to get some more information out to the public and get a package so everybody can see this, but I just want, I know there's some folks out there interested in what the city council's doing right now in terms of preparing and, you know, moving forward, research and analysis on that adventure park. I just wanted to give you a quick update on that. Thanks.
Thanks, Aaron, and thanks for everybody's hard work on that, for sure. Anything else from council? How about public? Anything from the public? Non-agenda items? Hi, Deb.
Deb Holland with the Black Hills Pioneer. I'm just wondering, on the tabling, the cultivation license, was that at the applicant's request or do you need more information or what? What's going on?
Definitely more information is needed. It was talked about. Rick's going to reach out to them. There's some concerns that need to be, not concerns, but questions that need to be answered on how it impacts the city and our infrastructure that haven't been answered yet.
Okay, so under your ordinance, can you give more than one cultivation license?
We can, yes. There's no restrictions on that license in particular.
Okay. And it's not a competition or pull-out-of-the-hat or anything? Okay.
Thanks, Deb. Anything else? Come on up, Max.
Hey, Maxwell said, "I own the Prairie Emporium down on the corner on Main Street. I just need a little clarification on this." I got a letter about a month ago, said, "Hey, the city's reaching out. They're helping local businesses or residents book vending during the rally." And I thought, wow, that's cool. Been here ten years, city's never reached out to help me with anything like that. So there was no letterhead on the, on the letter and I couldn't read the signature. And it said to call a phone number. So instead of calling the phone number, I liked to look people in the eye. So I went down to the office and talked to an employee and said, "Hey, what's the deal with this program? And how did it come up?" And he told me that the council came up with it. And I said, "Explain it to me." He said, "Well, we bring you a vendor and we charge you thirty percent." And I went, "Holy, oh, thirty percent? That doesn't, that isn't a standard in any contract in this environment." And so I thought, "That's weird." And he said, "Wait, Max, it gets worse yet. You have to sign a five-year contract." So as a chamber member, as a business owner, and just as a citizen, so then I look and I say, "Well, who signs up for something like this?" And I was told that, "Well, you know, you know everybody, so you don't need as much help." And quite the contrary, "My lot's empty right now for this rally coming up, so I need as much help as I can get from the city or from any of you." And then I was told that, "Well, you know everybody, so it kind of applies to older people or people maybe that have a contract." And I said, "Oh, great. That's thirty percent. Let's take advantage of older people for five years. That makes a lot of sense." So anyway, at the end of the conversation, I said, "How many people have signed up and who cooked this program up on the thirty percent?" And he said, "No one." So I am here to find out which council members came up with this. And rather than making a, wasting all that time and energy on that, me taking an hour off to come talk to someone, find out about it, no one's going to sign up for this. You'd be out of your... So I wonder why it was cooked up and why, why aren't we doing something to really help business owners rather than that piece of paper and that contract? So I guess I can maybe get an answer from somebody about that piece of paper.
Over the years, we've tried to make it, if landowners so choose, to make their life easier if they want to have vendors on the rally but don't want to do a lot of the work. This is another swing, I guess, at saying, you know, we can hopefully help provide vendors if you want, if you, if you want to be part of it but don't want to put in the front side or the execution side and all that. It was brought forward by council recently to bring this forward and to send it out. It certainly, we want to make the rallies as good as possible, Max. And if someone could take advantage of this program and it makes sense for their situation, we want to encourage that.
it makes sense for their situation, we want to encourage that. But as, as far as...
But there are private companies that do this, and no one charges thirty percent. So does the thirty percent go to the city of Sturgis?
Correct, to the sponsorship side of the income.
Wouldn't it make sense to maybe help a chamber member out, or somebody that owns a business on Main Street before, like, because you get all the sponsors call, right? They call your office, correct? Every sponsor, for the most part, right?
Lance is in charge of the sponsorship.
So they call the office. So then it's like, whoever gets to send them to wherever they want. And if the city's taking thirty percent, right? I don't know that the city's in business to do that. That's my question. It comes back to a lot of things the city's doing right now. There's a store on Main Street that I saw on the budget, that's, that's, that's a little bit of money that we're budgeting towards this, what started off as sort of a Christmas store, that's now being called an incubator, that isn't really an incubator. And when I have customers come into my store and say, hey, I, I, we just, can you grab, hop up on that ladder and grab that jar, right? And I get it down, I show them, I say, it's eight bucks. Oh, we just got them at the other store down the street. There isn't another store down the street. Yeah, there is. There's a government-run store, and however you look at it, somebody's making twenty-seven thousand dollars a year to run that store on Main Street to compete against me. And if we look in the beginning of your numbers earlier, it showed all their sales, Mark, every single sale they've had, right? In that sheet that was on there, last month.
In the claims.
I'm curious how my competition did. Do you, do you get what I'm saying? No one's coming to me saying, hey, Max, we can pay your son twenty-seven thousand dollars a year to run a store. You have a city-run store on Main Street now that's getting funding to compete against me. I don't know if they're paying sales. They obviously pay sales tax. But my point is, they're not paying property taxes. They don't own a building. I'm sure it's a rally rental. We all know what's going on. It's direct competition. Those two items I've just brought up are kind of big, when you think about it. And when you think about if you want to come and compete in this town and business. Again, thirty percent. Let me know when you have somebody signed up. I feel like when things like this come up in the city, there's a reason that figure is thirty percent. There's a reason we didn't go with the standard in the industry. And I don't understand it. And that's why I'm here asking about it. So, sorry to take your time out. But those are things that kind of, you sit and think. You get a letter, you waste an hour of your life, thirty percent. What the heck? Why wouldn't you guys just help me out? I live here. Thank you.
Thanks, Max. Anything else, other matters before council? Come on up, sir.
How you doing? My name's Nevada Ellison. I am a fifth-generation rancher, so I'm a little bit tuckered out. I've been up at Lemmon digging out cows for three days. So I might be talking a little slow. I have a cannabis company. It's called Black Hills Cannabis Care. We have a facility in Rapid City, one in Butte County, and one in Fort Pierre. These gentlemen that are applying for a license in your city are actually my competition. One of the things I do in with city councils and commissions throughout the Black Hills is I try to, I try to make these cannabis companies coming into your cities accountable for community development. So we started this group, I call it CAP, Cannabis Against Addiction Project. And what I, what I've done is I've been getting ahold of these different cannabis companies. Ryan was the first one that I called, and we're going to allocate money towards places like Compass Point, which we've already made a, a deal with, and other places, schools for drug programs. And I think it's important that, that we do this when these cannabis companies are coming in, to make sure that they're making the communities better, because there's going to be a pretty significant amount of money. And just so you guys are aware, these guys were on board right away. And they did give me permission to speak on behalf of this water issue, because I helped them write their application. We don't waste water. We don't put water down the drain. It all gets collected. All the water that goes through the growing medium, we collect it, we run it through an RRL filter, and we reuse it. We don't waste any water. These guys can speak with whoever they need to speak with for the next city council meeting. But just wanted to kind of bring that to you guys' attention. And these guys are at the forefront of community development. They have five or six pages, which I helped them with, on different things to make the community better. And I think that's important to do as these cannabis companies come in. And yeah, I'll probably be at the next one. Buggy, guys, too. Hopefully I have some sleep by then. But yeah, thank you for your time.
Thanks, Nevada. Anything else from the public? Council come up with anything else through the process? We do have a need for executive session. Mr. Marshall, no actions anticipated, I assume, with the agenda the way it is? Is there a motion for exec?
Show move.
Got a first by Dave.
Second.
Second by Dean. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by stating yes.
Yes.
Opposed, the no. We're off to exec. Seven twenty-seven is what time it is right now. We'll start, we'll say seven thirty-five.